Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, October 4th. I'd like to welcome everyone to our work session. Board members present in the boardroom are members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Donley, and Bellamy. Joining us online will be member, he's not there yet, but Member Higgins will be joining us electronically. We also have Dr. Bryant and several staff members along with Amanda Foster, our executive assistant. So with that, we will go to item B, which is our board member request for information. Whenever you're ready, I think we have just one. We have some that are still in the queue, but we've already talked about those. The one item we have, and it's just from Member Holloman, is an update on the Vera Health Clinic. And it's not an emergency, but we will get to it as soon as we can. Member Holloman?
If I remember correctly, prior to the pandemic, we were going to get a detailed report on how the clinics had worked out as opposed to not having the clinics and just a general idea of how well we're doing on healthcare costs overall.
All right, we have that in the queue. Thank you. Are there any other requests at this time? Member Dunley?
It was quite a while ago, and I'm not sure if there was a result from this or not. But I was under the impression that the administration was going to do a survey of schools regarding compliance with the Pledge of Allegiance Administrative Regulation that says it would be done in the morning over the loudspeaker and to identify if there are any other schools other than the ones we already know of, which are Greening and Polaris that aren't doing it. And I don't remember if we got something back on that or not.
And I don't think it was with Dr. Bryant. So this will be his first time hearing that.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago.
So we will, Dr. Bryant, did you want to speak to it and tell them when you'll have?
Sure, if you wouldn't mind providing just a written statement of what information you'd like, I can work with the team to provide it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Not seeing any others. We are anxious to get to item C, which is our budget update. Dr. Bryant?
Good afternoon, board and ASD community. This afternoon, we'll continue our months-long conversation on ways to address our looming financial deficit. We are joined by school efficiency expert Shannon Bingham, who will brief the board on the considerations behind school consolidations and reprogramming. I know that's an incredibly difficult topic, but it is an important one to have as part of our research phase. School consolidations, as we've shared in the past, would be a very small piece of the budget solutions puzzle. However, we'd like to share with you how school offerings and the depth of academic programming can be improved at scale. This information will inform the board's decision-making process. So with that, I'll hand it off to Chief Financial Officer Jim Anderson.
Okay, good evening, slide please. Okay, as they're flipping slides, everyone should be familiar with the fiscal cliff slide. There haven't been any changes to it, but we will start every brief with it. For those who are joining us for the first time, and we're also going to put some other things online to better clarify the fiscal cliff and how we got here and why we're here for the general public. So we've shown this slide a few times, we use the same agenda slide. You'll see in gray all the things we've talked about before, but necessarily didn't come to closure yet. And you'll see in dark blue, underlying bold, that tonight we'll be talking primarily, the bulk of it will be on school efficiency studies, school closure repurpose as we prepare for 18 October's next briefing. And then we will also be talking about sports and activities and the cost per student. Slide. You've seen this slide before. Everything on this sliding scale does not mean that the board has decided on it. We are still in the research stage, there are many, many decisions to make. But it will show at least a path to get to a balanced budget. Next slide. So when you look at this slide, if you look across the bottom from left to right, I put four scales. And as we come close to reaching a decision or make a decision, we'll start grouping all of the different possible solutions onto the scales so we can start seeing how much money fits in each category. I know the board has not voted on Board Memo 24 or the substitute amended Board Memo 24, but just for briefing purposes, I did put the one-time money for this FY from the state under likely reduction because that did get us to a $68 million start point. And also you'll see over on insurance coverage, we've looked at all the layers of insurance and what it came down to after discussions with legal personnel that we could cut $97,500 and on one incident of something horrible happening in the district, losing that $10 million gap. It just didn't make sense to take that kind of risk, especially in this environment. So the staff isn't looking at insurance anymore unless the board would like to learn more about it. There's really just not enough, there's no fat on insurance. You'll also see I put sixth grade to middle school, middle school model and sixth grade band and orchestra. I intentionally colored them and kind of separated them from the group just to start the concept of there's going to be many things that we bring up that are tied to other choices. And like school closures, you may see a school closure name come out next week or next briefing. And there's a lot of impacts if people want to randomly replace a school that was going to close after the transportation analysis was done, after we've looked at sped programs and other pre-K academy and all these other choices that go into how the plan fits. If you start randomly changing to make it better from a constituent perspective, it really will skew so many other things. So I thought this was a good example because sixth grade move to middle school will actually cost us more if we don't do the middle school model change. And we're still working on what that change might look like. And you're not going to be able to reduce sixth grade band and orchestra easily unless the middle school model changes and sixth grade moves to middle school. We did the math, we looked at the number of students, 1,823, I think it was, that took band and orchestra in sixth grade elementary. And the vast majority of them took seventh grade band and orchestra this year. So it isn't something where they just take it once and then as soon as they get to middle school, they don't take it again. It really was students who chose a path. So those three I kind of look at and the staff does is kind of tied together. I did circle immersion programs. We have put a lot of effort into looking at immersion programs. And I did want to point out to the board that at this point, the staff has refocusing their efforts to 912 and modifying the way that that program is delivered and are no longer actively looking at K8. And I know there's a lot of people talking tonight, but initially we started looking at it from a cost savings. It was incredibly complicated to try to really look at redoing all of the districts' immersion in elementary and middle school in the next two and a half months. So we are focusing our efforts on the model of delivery for high school. And then you can see the rest. So next slide, please, will be Mr. Shannon Bingham, and he will take over from here.
Thank you, Jim. Well, good evening, Dr. Bryant and members of the board, it's a privilege to be here. My name is Shannon Bingham, I own a company called Western Demographics. I have been a school planning and operational consultant for almost 40 years now and have about a five-year history working with Anchorage School District on various issues and have worked elsewhere in Alaska. I have prepared a brief presentation that shows a national perspective on school efficiency studies and what those steps and potential benefits can be as you consider this as a portion of your strategy in addressing your budgetary challenges. Hopefully, I'll be able to inform you as to what some of those benefits might be. Districts all over the country have really accelerated their interest in school efficiency studies during the last five years. I have probably conducted eight or 10 of them over the last 36 months post-pandemic. A lot of districts have discovered that they lost about 3% of their enrollment and a lot of those children did not return. And so a lot of districts have been left with some budgetary challenges. And as they see COVID money ending, they're looking at every concealable strategy to try to continue to deliver a consistent level of service to the children in their districts. So as we look at this, a lot of it has come to pass as a result of other factors. Birth rates and family creation rates have declined during the past decade. We're looking at current generations having significantly fewer children than in the past. Housing costs, quite frankly, have affected a lot of young couples' decision-making regarding having a family or how big a family might be and what sort of a dwelling they would like to raise a family in. So a lot of those decisions have become rather complicated. As I mentioned, some districts have lost about 3%, others have lost 5%. And a lot of those families evaluated online education or other non-neighborhood school opportunities and decided to stick with those. It may have fit their child's learning style a little bit better. And I like to refer to online as kind of the Star Trek model of learning. And a lot of families during about an 18-month period went that way and stayed with it. And if we had not had the pandemic, that would have been a 10- or 15-year evolution. It really happened because so many families tried a different mechanism. So that's one of the things that has happened to us. There's been a lot of competition from those online providers because a lot of them were created as a result of the pandemic and a lot of them grew as a result of the pandemic. So they're a larger component of the education services market than they've been in the past. A lot of the districts that have approached me during the last two years have also been economically challenged and have really looked at their communities, which have other economic challenges and have stepped forward as an institution to say, we want to be part of the effort to become more efficient. So they've chosen the efficiency study mechanism in order to achieve that end. As far as the level of service approach, most of the districts I've worked with have really tried to make level of service to the student as one of the primary considerations or the primary consideration as they've considered efficiency. So the goal has been to deliver the same or a similar level of service than what we had before and just try to become more efficient as an institution in delivering those programs. So a lot of what I look at is very much focused on how do we do that? When schools begin to be smaller, a lot of the services that are not the gen ed classroom experience, meaning general education, become challenged. So art, music, and PE, all throughout the Western United States are becoming more challenged as partial FTE teachers come in to deliver those services and other issues associated with costs start affecting those programs. In addition to that, the average elementary school has about 35% of its faculty as a non-classroom specialist, meaning they teach some sort of a supporting service. So basically, that would include specialized education teachers and their assistants, who may be non-certified teaching assistants. Some districts call them teacher on special assignment or TOSA or something to that effect. It also includes librarians, school psychologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech-language pathologists, instructional coaches, ESL teachers, and so on and so forth. Modern education is very much composed of not only the gen ed teacher as the anchor, but a lot of specialists that serve each child. And a lot of children may have five adults on their team. So a lot of these districts, as they've looked at how they're structured, they have tried to figure out a way to how do I continue to have five adults on that child's team? So that's been at the root of my approach to school efficiency is to try to figure out if there are ways that we can save money, but keep five adults on every one of those kids' teams, so to speak. At the secondary level, course offerings and master scheduling become a big challenge in addition to all of those specialized educators who also serve middle and high school children. But course offerings, when you become very small, especially when you have maybe 400 children in a seven, eight middle school, you have two teams per grade level, math, science, language arts, and social studies. And then you struggle to recreate an elective team, people to teach middle school electives, sports, extracurricular activities. So all of those things become stressed when you're running a smaller middle school or a smaller high school. A lot of high school students who work want to have their core academics and their required classroom work in the morning and then go to their job in the afternoon. When you're in a small high school, getting your schedule to work out that way becomes challenging. Or if you work in the morning, getting your afternoon schedule to work out that way can be challenging. As far as the process goes, we always start with this level of service concept. Try to figure out a way to deliver to each student more or less the same thing that they were getting before, but do it using a different mechanism. So we tend to start looking at this consolidation process. If we have small schools that can be joined into one, we start looking at pairs of schools that are adjacent to each other and figure out a way to see if there is a way we can serve a group of students currently served in one and two schools with one school and have it serve a larger service area. Sometimes we expand that to serve three or four areas in order to make the boundaries work. But for the most part, we try to affect as few adjacent schools as possible in order to get to a consolidated location. When we look at those schools, we're almost always looking at the smaller schools because if you have a couple of one-and-a-half section per grade level, meaning not even two kindergartens, two first grades, two second grades, when you have a pair of those together, a lot of times you can combine those into a single three-section school that would have three first grades, three second grades, three third grades. And you can deliver service to those children with a larger faculty, a larger set of adults, a lot of times with a broader set of skills. So that's the research process behind identifying candidates. As far as, let's see, what else is on this? We try to identify in this research process the best possible scenarios. And if we're going to broach a proposal, we try to see this is the best proposal that we could bring forward for consideration because we don't want to alarm people unnecessarily if we're looking at something that wouldn't work from a transportation standpoint, it wouldn't work from a special services standpoint, it wouldn't work from a pedestrian standpoint if we're unable to deliver transportation in an area. So we try to process all of those rubrics before we identify a candidate. The stakeholder process generally begins with the experts that know how each of those segments of our service model work. And then we move forward with showing you a group of candidates as a board. And then you endorse an overall school efficiency strategy if you choose to move forward and you pick a set of schools for us to process with stakeholders. Then we move on to principals and then faculty and then parents. And I've done an alarming number of these in the last 36 months. A lot of them have been virtual before the pandemic. And prior to that, I was doing quite a few of them with either open house meetings or with just a standard in-person community meeting where we propose a change of school service pattern in a specific area. Let's see, this next slide shows how repurposing candidates are identified. I mentioned some of that in my comments previously. You can see that we are looking at schools that are small, that are forecast to continue declining. Alaska does not develop a school attendance area birth data, but we're able to watch our enrollment volume at the kindergarten level and kind of do some forecasting as to how many additional children we would expect to decline in an area. A lot of this has to do with housing affordability is an issue. A lot of our more affordable neighborhoods tend to have the most children. And I think there were 55 new homes for sale in Greater Anchorage today. So we're not exactly booming from a housing standpoint as we were back in 2018, the last time I took a long, hard look at the district. So I think that we're probably going to decline, which makes the school efficiency process a little bit easier, if you will, because we know we will continue to have small schools. On this next slide, you will see my preliminary forecast, which shows us declining by about 2% per year for the next five years. Now again, the world can turn on a dime depending upon a variety of factors in the energy sector and the military sector. We know we may be looking at some increase in force at Jay Bear and that may have some effect on us. But fundamentally, we're looking at those five factors that you see there really resulting in a confirmed and probably certain decline in our enrollment in Anchorage School District. On this next slide, you'll see our age distribution. Back when I started helping the district in 2017 versus where we are this fall. And you can see those blue bars, which are our 2017 enrollment by grade. We were a lot bigger, we were 500 students bigger in a lot of those grades. And now those individual grades, especially in those elementary-level grades, are significantly less. And that is kind of the built-in enrollment decline that we expect to move through our system and it's what has affected us during the last five years. And it's what will eventually move into the middle school grades and result in us having 700 to 1,000 fewer middle school children in about five years. And so that has some bearing on our capacity to move the sixth grade into the middle schools and run those buildings a little bit more efficiently, offer those children broader, more extensive elective offerings, have more academic teams in every building, be able to cover teachers who are absent with either a qualified sub or with a teacher that could partner with a non-certified assistant and teach 50 kids in a team teaching setup if we can't find a sub on a day where we have a short notice absence. So there are a lot of flexibilities that would open up at the middle school level. This next slide shows from a birth standpoint, where we stand in the state of Alaska from 2015 through 2019, which was the last year I could get data for the state overall. And you could see that we've declined substantially during that five-year period. And this is affecting all of the big districts and all of the small districts as well. It's not cleanly in one part of Alaska, but for the most part, everybody is having fewer babies throughout the state. In the municipality of Anchorage, on the next slide, you'll see that we have also declined rather dramatically through 2020. And those vectors are all downward. Now eventually, we're going to stabilize. We're going to hit some sort of a flat point. That rate of decline will diminish and will level off a little bit. But at this point, we're still pointing downward and expecting to have fewer children coming into those elementary grades and moving on into the intermediate-age grades and then on into middle school. So we're expecting fewer babies. If we go out and poll the birth centers, and there are four big ones and three little ones in the Anchorage Bowl, and we're looking at all of those declining. A lot of these are moms from South Central Alaska that may be coming to Anchorage to address a complex pregnancy in a larger hospital. So this is more than that Anchorage total. But you can see every one of those birth centers is showing a declining annual birth count. And we're expecting for 20, 21, and 22 for that trending to continue based upon what we've seen. This next slide shows, well, how are we structured at the elementary level? Well, we have nine one-section schools, meaning between .8 and about 1.4 sections per grade level. So that's what we call a one-section school, one class per grade level. We have 19 two-section schools where we have between 1.5 sections per grade and about 2.4. And then at the three-round level, between two-and-a-half and above sections per grade level, we have 11 of those. Our average is about 1.9. There's a little bit of volatility in there because of where the breaks are. And when you have one-and-a-half sections worth of children, a lot of times you go ahead and staff two sections. If you don't, you do a combination class, a blended class, or a combo, as a lot of districts call them. And we have quite a few of those. But in general, those are the break points that most HR people use when they're looking at how do I describe a school? So we're mostly two-round. Now that may sound small, but we're pretty comparable to a lot of our urban peers who are also doing school efficiency studies. So on the next slide, you'll see that as we look district to district, you can see that our urban peers, we have about 350 children at our average elementary school. And then you can see kind of three types of district in this graphic. You can see Portland, Seattle, Tacoma, which are definitely urban school districts and we're very comparable to them. You can see Lake Washington, Spokane, who have about 430 to 450 students per grade level. Those are bigger districts that have a lot more, or they have younger families in them. They're what I call higher-yield school districts. All of these districts have between 36,000 and 42,000 kids, with the exception of Matsu and Fairbanks, which are smaller, which are in the graphic because they're Alaskan districts. But you can see that relative to our urban partners, including Portland there, we're pretty much on a par at that average of about 350-something. When you look at this next graphic, you'll see at the middle school level, there we are with, why I can't read that on this monitor. Am I wearing my computer glasses? Oh, okay. So basically, what we're looking at there at the middle school level is 653. So if you look across to Spokane, comparable for us, they're at 650. If you look across to Portland, they're at 538. So they're actually a little bit smaller. And then the other grouping. And then the other grouping, which includes Salem Kaiser at eight thirty-eight and Idaho too, which is Ada County, which includes Eagle and Meridian and the west side of Boise, they're bigger. Now, every school in those districts is going to be bigger than us because of the age of the housing, the jobs that are available in those communities and the student yield that those families actually enjoy. You can see Matt Sue is smaller at six hundred and Fairbanks is yet smaller at three seventy-two. And that was prior to the recent grade reconfiguration and school closure cycle that we did last year in Fairbanks. Those changes are were effective for the start of school this year. So we're about four weeks in to the changes that we made in Fairbanks from a school efficiency standpoint. On this next graphic, you're going to see, well, how does that break down as far as who is six-eight and who's seven-eight? Throughout the United States, six-eight is not a hundred percent phenomenon. So there is a mixture. I have worked with a lot of districts to do middle school grade reconfiguration, moving from seven-eight to six-eight. A lot of that for not only efficiency reasons, but also for curriculum. A lot of the districts just decided they wanted their sixth-grade students in middle school, and that was a model where those children would get more exposure to electives and they made a choice from a curricular standpoint. But as you look at this, you can see that we have three schools that are six-eight, which is thirty percent of our middle school clientele. And that Fairbanks was about twenty-five seventy-five, with seventy-five percent in grade seven and eight. And that was because the three big middle schools in the city of Fairbanks were seven and eight, and then the schools that are in North Pole were six through eight. So that was the breakdown in Fairbanks until this year. And now we're a hundred percent six-eight and zero percent seven-eight. And you can see that Matt Sue, that Idaho district, which is Ada Two, which includes Eagle, Meridian and West Boise is a hundred percent six-eight. Beaverton, Portland, Salem Kaiser, Lake Washington and Seattle, all at a hundred percent. And then Spokane has four big middle schools that are still seven-eight. So they're about eighty-twenty. And then you can see Tacoma is also a hundred percent six-eight. This next slide shows just a little summary of what we did up in Fairbanks. Now keep in mind that we're about a third the size of Anchorage in Fairbanks, so smaller district. Similar circumstances though, Alaskan district, Alaskan values, two big military bases. From a family profile standpoint, we had a lot of the same values and a lot of the challenges with schools that were built during the baby boom echo and are now underpopulated. And so we went through and we closed Anderson, which is on Isles, Ben Isles Air Force Base. And we consolidated that into a K-six school, and then we moved the sixth grade into Ben Isles and Junior Senior High. So we did a grade reconfiguration for the Isles and Air Force Base area in conjunction with closing one school. We closed Joy Elementary, which was our oldest school and needed a five-point-five million dollar roof. And that was an older cost estimate. I'm not real sure we could do it for five million bucks, but one of our oldest buildings, fifty-eight, fifty-nine-year-old building. And then we closed Norgale, which is in an area halfway between Fairbanks and North Pole. And restructured that for a best homeschool augmentation location where families in their homeschooling location could come in and have specialized services provided for the children who would be in homeschool services. At the middle school level, we took Randy Smith Middle, which was running at four hundred students. Ryan, which is the newest school there in Fairbanks. And Tanana, which is at the one, at the gate to the army base there, and we reformatted, restructured those to be grade six-eight. So we did a combination of three closures and a middle school grade reconfiguration and recreated three significantly larger middle schools and really believe that the course offerings and richness that those sixth-grade children will have available to them will be worth it. So that's what we did up in Fairbanks. As far as the high school level, we're at an average of about thirteen fifty and our urban peer districts, you can see that our urban peers are really Tacoma, Seattle at twelve, thirteen oh seven, Tacoma at twelve seventy, Portland at thirteen twenty-three. So even though those communities are in the I-five corridor and seem huge, the school district boundary is very similar to Anchorage. Urban core, high-rise downtown, and those districts have high schools about the size of ours. So we don't really have a size issue at the high school level. We're, we're, we're well positioned within our peer group. On the next slide, you will see how many combination classes do we have? We have eight schools that are blended, including Bowman, Chinook, Tugatch and Susitna. And then Denali and Tudor are actually Montessori, which is built upon blended grade levels within sections. But you can see that beyond that, in our district, we have quite a few combination classes. Now, I've been beaten up all over the Western United States and Michigan over combos by individual parents who want their child in a section with one grade level. And I've also been beaten up by teachers all over the Western United States who do not want to have two preps. They don't want to teach two age groups in a classroom. And they don't want a heterogeneous group of kids sitting in the chairs in front of their teaching stations. So however, the majority of Western US districts are using the combination approach in order to survive financially. We just can't afford to run a section with thirteen kids in it. When you get smaller schools, a lot of times you'll have forty-nine first graders, forty-nine second graders, fifty-three third graders. Then you'll have thirty-three fourth graders. Okay, you'll have this one dip section, and then maybe you'll have another dip section where you'll have thirty-five kids in a section. And the rest of your grade levels will be fifty kids. So that makes the staffing math associated with smaller schools way more volatile when you get small. And that costs money, and a lot of districts have to cope with that fact as they staff their buildings. The next slide shows another thing that we look at. This is northeast Anchorage with a one-mile radius drawn around the eleven schools that serve that ten-square-mile area. We're pretty dense there. So that is the kind of thing that we look at when we consider repurposing schools and taking a few schools offline for gen ed delivery purposes. We look at these kind of tight clustering areas. This also happens to be the densest pop student population in the district as well. So we have to be a little bit careful as we scratch our heads about, are there some opportunities here for us to become more efficient? As we look at these buildings, most of those are in the seventies, meaning from an efficiency standpoint. They're not in the nineties, they're in the seventies. So we're looking at ten schools that are running at seventy percent efficiency. So in the business world, people would say, well, maybe you've got too many stores in a dense area. So that's unfortunately, kind of one of the main things that we look at is this clustering concept. The next slide shows at the middle school level and what's our percentage utilization. And you see our three schools that are six-eight and the rest that are seven-eight there, and you also see a lot of schools that are in the seventies. And as our middle school enrollment drops, I believe that in the next thirty-six months, we would be able to do a middle school grade reconfiguration along with some boundary changes and acknowledging the fact that these capacities were figured at twenty-five to one. And we may be unable to deliver middle school education at that kind of a staffing ratio anymore. So theoretically, these buildings will probably hold more kids if you discount the effectiveness of their core areas, meaning cafeteria, the hallway, student commons, gymnasiums, libraries, and all the other things that children share within a building. But I'm looking at this and based upon the dozen middle school reconfigurations I've done elsewhere, I see within a thirty-six-month period that Anchorage School District could reconfigure within this group of buildings and go six-eight with some changes, with some tiers, with a lot of hand wringing and a lot of stress, but I think from a budgetary standpoint, we could wind up with those ten or eleven buildings being in the mid-nineties from an efficiency standpoint. And I think there would be a lot of victories for individual students who are looking for a richer elective program, who are looking for more opportunity to explore things that they may not, may be interested in during their middle school years before they move on to high school and start thinking about a career. So so at any rate, that's, that's my presentation. Kathy, what's this last slide? That's transitioning to Jim. So I'll thank you for your attention and be delighted to respond to your questions at the end of the presentation.
Okay, before Marty starts talking this slide, I would just like to remind everyone, we are still in the research stage. This is not a recommendation. We had started in late July saying we would put all of the cost drivers on the table for the school board. We knew that many of them would be unpopular even to be viewed, much less decisions that may follow. However, at the end of the day, getting from sixty-eight million to zero is probably a lot of unpopular decisions to be made. But this is, this is our attempt to provide a view of sports in ASD, and now I'll hand over to Marty.
Thank you, Jim. Good afternoon, Board. Marty Lang, Secondary Director. One of the things that I help oversee for the district is our sports and activity program. So today, just wanted to spend a little bit of time giving you some impertaining in that and kind of what the costs are that are associated with our secondary sports program. So on the right side of the slide, you'll see just kind of some high-level stuff about what we're seeing in terms of participation right now. Last year, we had over four thousand high school students participate in at least one sport. Many of those students ended up participating in the second or third sport. We even had a few who participated in up to five sports during last year. They filled about sixty-two hundred seats on rosters. That's down a little bit from where we were pre-pandemic. We would historically see about eight thousand participants across our rosters in a given year. So we know we're down about twenty-five percent. But we're still, we still are seeing about a third of all high school students participating in at least one sport or activity during the year. This fall, we have just over three thousand students who are participating in a fall sport. Fall sports season is our largest. We offer nine sports in the fall. Overall, we offer twenty-two sport opportunities to high school students. We operate seventeen of those. And we have five sports that are sponsored or managed by outsourced organizations. The cost of that program at the high school level, if you roll up all the costs for officiating, facility rentals, equipment, hiring coaches, all the things associated with those sports is about four-point-four million dollars last year. We are able to offset that a little bit with some of the revenue that we collect primarily through gate at our sporting events, and then also through the sports fees that we collect from students. Currently, we charge students a participation fee of two hundred dollars to participate in a high school sport. We charge that two hundred dollar fee for their first and second sport of the year, and then any sports they participate in beyond that. We don't charge them any further. We do offer a waiver program to students who are part of the free and reduced lunch program. So there are some students who don't pay anything for that participation. At the middle school level, last year, we had thirty-two hundred middle school students participate, nearly fifty percent of all the middle school students, which is a really good positive thing that they're involved in those activities. They've always had real high numbers and we're continuing to see that. This fall, we have just over thirteen hundred students who are participating in a fall sport. We run fewer sports programs at the middle school level. Currently, we run ten sports programs, and then we have two additional ones in recent years that we added, baseball and softball, that are run by an outsourced organization. We spend just under a million dollars running those middle school sports. And we recoup less money. It's primarily just through participation fees. We don't typically charge gate at middle school events. So right now we are charging a hundred and ten dollars per student for participation. And just like in high school, they pay for their first two sports, and then after that, we don't charge them for further participation. Over on the left side of the slide, you'll see kind of a cost breakdown by sport. And we also included the number of students who participated in that sport last year. So you can see that cost broken down on kind of a per student or per participant basis. So it runs the gamut from two hundred and fifty-two dollars per student to run cross-country running at high school all the way up to almost seventeen hundred dollars per student to run hockey, boys' ice hockey. So wide range there. Next slide. Couple of things as you think about potential cost savings through sports program cuts or reductions. We do have a federal obligation under Title IX to make sure that we are providing equal participation opportunities for both male and female athletes. So any reductions that we make, we just have to make sure that that, that impact is balanced across those opportunities. This year, you'll see, or last year, we had a little bit higher participation at the high school with males versus females. It was flipped at middle school. From year to year, that does fluctuate. So kind of doing a five-year trend analysis. On average, we're pretty, pretty balanced in our numbers, and we certainly have strived to provide a balanced opportunity for students to participate. Another thing that's kind of interesting when we think about sports and involvement in activities, extracurricular activities, is we know it has a positive impact on academic outcomes. In two thousand and eleven, our assessment and evaluation department at the time did an internal study where they looked at students who participated in one or more sports and compared their academic outcomes to their peers who did not. And we found that pretty much every metric that we measure, they performed better. So we saw higher graduation rates, better attendance, higher GPAs, lower discipline incidents. So we know that sports have a powerful connector, a connecting opportunity for kids that they help students kind of create a sense of belonging. They're more engaged in their school community, and as a result, they, they perform better academically. So that's certainly something to consider as we look at possible reductions to our sports and activities program. We were tasked with just kind of thinking about, you know, where we could possibly make some reductions in our sports programs. One possible reduction would be in our contract with the Dome. We spend two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on that contract currently. That does afford us the opportunity for our spring sports to, to get students practicing and participating about four weeks earlier than we're able to typically get outside when the snow has melted off and those tracks and turf fields become available. But it does come at a pretty high cost. The Dome contract currently is split across four of our sports. We have middle school track, high school track, and boys' and girls' soccer that all utilize the Dome. But we do know that that could be a potential cost savings without reducing the opportunity to participate in those sports, because prior to the Dome's existence, we know that those sports were able to operate. And so that's one possible consideration. The next two bullets, we kind of looked at what are the highest-cost sports and what are the sports where we're seeing kind of the lowest enrollment? And so you'll see swimming and hockey are, are two most expensive sports per pupil, and that's because they are associated with pretty high contract costs. We spend two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on average a year to rent the pools back from the municipality. And we spend about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on contracting for ice time at four different ice arenas that are managed by the municipality here in Anchorage. We also have at least one program right now that's seeing historically low rates. Gymnastics only had fifty-three participants last year. That's fluctuated a little bit over the last five years, but they haven't seen more than a hundred participants in the last five years. And so that's a possible sport that we could look at, at eliminating. look at at eliminating. The last bullet point there, we could investigate further the possibility of outsourcing sports to programs in the community where there's already a corresponding comp program to the sport that we're offering. I'll pause just there a little bit and talk about our outsourced sports. I mentioned earlier that we have five at high school and two at middle school currently. When we outsource a sport, we partner with an outside agency, and they take over the majority of the management of that sport for us. So we still do a lot of the processing in building in terms of determining student eligibility, processing all the students' paperwork, helping, you know, build a roster of interested students. But then we hand that off to the outsourced agency, and they they collect the fee from the students, they hire coaches and pay the coaches, they absorb the costs associated with offering that sport. And so it's in our current outsourced opportunities, it's it's worked out well. So for example, American Legion has managed baseball for us for a number of years. And so we haven't had any other outsourced agencies come forward and kind of volunteer to pick up a sport. But those are conversations that we could potentially enter into with organizations in our community where we know strong comp programs exist to see if there would be an interest there. That would likely not be an immediate switch that we could flip. It would have to be a conversation probably over the next year, and likely, we would have to look at maybe a transition plan where we transition the financial burden over to that outsourced agency. We did a similar thing when we outsourced girls' hockey about six, seven years ago. There was one additional bullet point that didn't make the slide. Another thing that we could consider, and that other districts in the lower forty-eight have looked at this, and that is not providing transportation in support of student activities when those activities are taking place in the in the Anchorage municipality. So we would still potentially bus students if they were out of area because it's a safety concern. There would still be travel costs associated with sports because we participate in state competitions that are sometimes out of our area. They sometimes take place in June or Fairbanks, and we have an obligation to get our athletes to those competitions. But we could look at potentially reducing the scope of our transportation within the Anchorage Bowl itself. So a couple of things for the board to consider. We do find a lot of value in our sports programs. We know there's a lot of students involved in them, and, you know, just looking at that analysis, it's having some pretty positive outcomes, not just in terms of their participation in the sport, but in academics. But wanted to offer that information up to the board.
Thank you. I feel like I'm really loud tonight. I just have a quick question. When we outsource, do they still follow ASA rules?
Yes.
They do.
So, yeah, like the American Legion runs baseball for us. Baseball is an ASA sanctioned sport, and so they still have the opportunity to participate in a region competition that could enter them into the state tournament that's run by ASA.
Okay. And and these costs that you have on here for the sports, is that that the transportation is included in the cost?
It is not in the individual sport breakdown calculations, but it is included in the overall cost for the high school program and the middle school program.
Okay, so the four point four million for high school would include transportation?
Correct.
Okay. Board members, you have questions? Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Shannon, five years ago, when we talked, we discussed options of K through eight schools also. At the time, you advised that was something you'd been working on with quite a few other districts. Having that option on the table, or I would like to have that option on the table for consideration here also. It gives us more options to consider, and I think it's a very positive model and very successful model for kids. My memory at the time is you said that there was kind of a national movement towards that at that time. Are you still seeing that?
I am, especially in the charter world. The majority of charters that are created are K through eight. The only challenge with K eights that I've experienced directly is their size. So if they wind up being one section per grade level, you wind up with a secondary student body, meaning the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, you have seventy-five of them. So if you're going to deliver math, science, language arts, and social studies, plus an elective program and extracurriculars to seventy-five kids, you have to wind up with a bunch of unicorn schoolteachers. And I think the averages I've seen for dual certification range from seven to ten percent of teachers are dual certified. So it's very difficult to find the teachers that can cover that kind of ground. And so if you can get a hundred and fifty or two hundred students in secondary students into a K eight in grade six through eight, you can do a little bit better and maybe even wind up with two academic teams. But I think the only constraint to K eight as a structural solution to school efficiency is the size of the secondary faculty and being able to cover content plus electives with a small group of professionals. Other than that, I've seen K eight be fairly effective in being a tool. It's just that during the since we spoke, a lot of the ones that I've seen created are single-section K eights, and they have a lot of staffing subsidy in order to deliver core curriculum and electives to the secondary age kids, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders.
Thank you. Member Higgins joined us at about four twenty. He had his hand up. You're muted. You're muted.
That's a little better, huh? I appreciate the data and trying to look at this sort of thing. And as I'm looking through it, I look at the source of data and how that's coming out. And some of it was a little bit surprising, the number of districts without the middle school or none. But then I looked at the list that was being used. Lake Washington, that's an unusual to me. Why select that one? I went and I started looking at Council of Great City Schools. I go to Portland, I see middle schools, I see some others. I'm wondering, and that's part of the influencing us with the list, and I'm wondering why that list was selected because it it seems unusual that all the ones selected are out there, long list of zero. And when I look at Council of Great City Schools, I see schools with middle schools.
I was selecting them just based on size, and I was trying to get four comparables for Washington State. So those were the four biggest, Tacoma, Spokane, Seattle, Lake Washington. And I work for Bellevue School District, but we've only got nineteen thousand students. So I was trying to get up into the size range of Anchorage School District. And I think Lake Washington has thirty-three thousand students, or at least they did as of the data vintage where I had data for everybody from their state associations. So I was trying to get the four biggest districts. So that's why Lake Washington wound up in that grouping. And then in Oregon, we were also looking at the three largest.
Okay, so Portland has the middle schools. That's a larger one. That's Council of Great City Schools. Lake Washington, according to this, was fifteen thousand when I pulled it up, but maybe I just didn't see the figure right. But like you said, I would be looking at the Council of Great City Schools a little bit if you're looking for comparable size. And that was a little bit, I just, I'm sure we could probably identify some in that group that have middle schools. And that's an issue. I'm looking not so much on what everybody else is doing. And that's not the big issue to me. The big issue is what's going to have, what's what selections we're going to make is going to have the least impact academically on our kids at a time when we need to improve it. And that's going to be the driving force, not a not a I can find how many places don't have it, so therefore, we don't need to deal with it. I've seen the studies in the nineties and two thousands on middle school. It was pretty positive on retention dropout rates and some of the other issues. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Wilson?
I have two. I'm sure they're fairly simple questions. What is there a cost to the district with the sports that we outsource? I wasn't clear on that.
There is not currently a cost associated with the sports that we outsource. Those agencies have picked up the the management and the expense of those. When we outsource girls' hockey, the Scotty Gomez Foundation that stepped forward to pick that up, there was, I believe, an agreement where we did some cost sharing for the first couple of years until they could kind of examine the viability of what how expensive was it to operate? Could they find sponsorship and other funding streams that would help support it? So there was kind of a warm handoff, and I believe that if we explored some of those conversations with some of the other comp organizations in Anchorage, that they would probably look for like similar agreements.
One other follow-up?
Follow-up, yes.
My other question, I just wanted clarification, and you may not have this information, is I see that gymnastics is the lowest participating rate sport, but is it primarily females, males and females? Like, I'm not sure the composition.
It's run by ASA as a female-only sport. So, yeah, if you look at the the total cost of running sport, it's not an expensive one for us to run, but it has had very low participation. The other thing that I would add with gymnastics is that we know we are in a situation where in the next couple of years, we're going to have to replace a significant amount of the equipment because it's becoming a safety issue as it's getting older. And so there are going to be some significant costs associated with maintaining gymnastics in the next couple of years.
Okay, we are almost at time, overtime, actually, but I saw member Lessen's hand.
We spoke a little bit about, we, Dr. Socks spoke a little bit about insurance, and maybe to Mr. Anderson. Is insurance, and I'm thinking specifically with respect to brain trauma or traumatic brain injury, is that factored into the costs of our athletic sort of expenditures or insurance is its own thing regardless of what I'm trying to ask here? Is is the cost of insuring students against traumatic brain injury featured or factored into these figures, or is that its own separate thing?
If you look at school district liability insurance nationwide, there's three factors as to why it goes up. And our liability insurance, we do all of that. We insure the district. So it's it's the traumatic brain injuries, sexual trauma, and school violence. Those are the three things that nationwide, regardless of whether ASD has had a lot of incidents or not, that they spread the increased cost of insurance to all districts. Obviously, there's travel insurance. There's other things that go along with with transporting students. But but as far as district liability, it's not broken out from sports. It's just personal injury and liability.
Uh-huh. One more follow-up. And this is an unrelated question for Shannon. Just could you clarify? I'm looking at page six, and with the projections, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, is that calendar year? Is that our is that our is that our academic year? I'm looking at this one here, and he could just.
Those are, it's SY twenty-three, twenty-four, SY twenty-four, twenty-five.
So so when it says twenty twenty-three, that would be for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which I would refer to as FY twenty-four?
Yep, FY twenty-four. And I apologize, I was trying to fit that and make it legible, and I clipped off the SY on the right side there.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to thank the staff and also Mr. Bingham. You gave us a lot of thoughtful information, and you really do know how schools operate. I appreciate that. I recognize that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to thank the staff for preparing everything for us today. So with that, we're going, we need to go come out of our work session and go into our executive session.
Madam President, I move to enter executive session for the purpose of contracts, legal updates, and
Personnel.
Personnel. Second.
Moved is moved in second to go into our executive session for legal contracts, personnel matters. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing, hearing none. We are moving into executive session. Thank you.